Good morning. My name is Simone Tarver and I'm the Chair of the Districting Commission. I've lived here in Everett for 26 of my 30 years. I grew up in View Ridge Madison and now I live in the Bayside neighborhood. Thank you for joining us this morning for our Districting Committee Community Meeting. As you may or may not know, the journey to get to this point of having a draft districting map started long before this commission was formed. In the 2010s grassroots efforts for more local representation led to a nonpartisan community coalition called Everett Districts Now championing the fight for districting in Everett. This culminated in two propositions being put on the ballot in 2018 to determine how many districts there should be and how many City Council seats should remain at large. The voters decided on five districts and two at-large seat configurations. In May 2019, after receiving 44 applications from 18 different neighborhoods in Everett, our City Council Mayor selected one commissioner, making sure to account for geographic diversity, meaning not selecting more than one person from a given district or a given neighborhood. Then, in August, these original eight commissioners selected the ninth commissioner and in November we hired Tony Fairfax as our districting master. Over the past year, our commission has worked tirelessly to establish the process for how we would create the districting map. We examined data on our city's population and demographics and we discussed our experiences and thoughts based on our unique experiences as Everett residents. We are presenting you with the draft final map, version A8. We are here to listen to the feedback of the community and answer relevant questions you may have. After these community meetings, we will reconvene to discuss the feedback provided and decide if any adjustments need to be made to the draft final map. Thank you again for being here with us today. So I'm going to turn it over to Nicole and the City of Everett staff for some comments before we get going.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nicole and I'm starting this meeting today and all the other community meetings and I just want to remind the speakers that you can get three minutes to provide comment. Please leave yourself muted until it's your turn to speak. When we play the video of Tony Fairfax providing the explanation of where our commission, how our commission got where they are today, please go ahead and turn off your camera so it doesn't interfere with those viewing from home. All of our comments will be tracked and put on the website. They're not tracked or beta, but we have a summary of each person's comments that go up on the website, so we can keep track. And if you have more comments you wish to provide, please feel free to do so in writing as all participants only get the opportunity to speak at one meeting. I think that's everything and Flora, our representative from the Legal Department, also has some comments to follow.
Good morning. I'm Flora. Just a few ground rules. No campaigning for candidates or initiatives. Please address your comments to the full commission. Do not engage in any personal attacks. Use civil language and focus your comments on the proposed map A8, which is the purpose of our public meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. And so next, we're going to show a brief districting overview video.
Hello. I'm Tony Fairfax and I'm the Districting Master for the Everett/Washington Districting Commission and I would present to you the proposed final draft plan A8. But first, I'd like to provide some background information and discuss how we developed the final draft plan. First, the City of Everett/Washington was a voting system with seven City Council members elected at large to a system with two elected at large and five City Council members elected within what's called single-member districts. In order to facilitate this process, the city created a nine-member districting commission. Eight members were selected by the city and one member was selected by the commission. They also hired a districting master, as myself, to assist with developing the city's first districting plan. The commission members included Mary Fossey, Vice Chair Chris Garai, James Langus, Ethel McNeil, John Monroe, Kari Quas, Chair Simone Tarver, Benjamin Young, and Julius Wilson. The city also provided an executive project coordinator, Nicole Webber, who facilitates logistical matters and ensures that the commission has the necessary assets to complete the All of the plans that were developed, including the proposed final draft plan, follow laws, guidelines that extend from the U.S. Constitution and various court cases, federal legislation, the Washington State Constitution and codes, the Washington State's Voting Rights Act, and the City of Everett/Washington Districting Master and Commission Directions and criteria. To summarize these guidelines, they include: the district shall be as reasonably equal in population as possible; the district shall be reasonably compact; district shall consist of geographically contiguous areas; district boundaries shall coincide with the existing recognized natural boundaries and shall, to the extent possible, preserve existing communities of related and mutual interest to the extent feasible; population data may not be used for the purpose of favoring or disfavoring any racial group or political party; and districts shall be drawn to follow existing or increasing boundaries. Continuously throughout plan development, we also preserve communities of interest. We followed the results of a citywide study that found that 75% of the respondents selected existing neighborhoods as the primary community of interest to preserve. Therefore, neighborhoods were prioritized for preserving or not splitting. However, some neighborhoods were split by precincts and precincts were used as the lowest building block. So in those instances, we had no choice but to split the neighborhood. The second-ranked community of interest in the study was Other. However, the third, fourth, and fifth-ranked communities of interest were Language, Income Groups, and Housing Types respectively. Thus, Language, Income Groups, and Housing Types and other common socioeconomic attributes were viewed and attempted to be preserved within districts. The commission's plans generated followed a logical and methodical process to develop, beginning with establishing the district cores. The district cores act like seeds for each district. There are five district cores representing five districts. They include 1 Delta, 2 Lowell, 3 Boulevard Bluffs, Harbor View, Seahurst Glen Haven, and View Ridge Madison, 4 Casino Road within Westmont, and 5 Silver Lake. After the selection of the district cores, several preliminary plans were generated by myself and presented to the commission. The commission provided comments on the advantages and disadvantages of each plan and that included the plans of A1, A2, A3, and B1. From those comments, I developed a new set of alternative plans and they included plans A4, A5, A6, and B2. Another set of comments were provided by the commissioners on the second set of alternative plans. These comments were incorporated into a final alternative draft plan, A7. Additional comments on Plan A7 were obtained from the commissioners and integrated to produce Plan A8, the proposed final draft plan. The proposed final draft plan, A8, followed all of the redistricting criteria that I discussed before. It is equal in population within an acceptable deviation. It is reasonably compact. The districts are contiguous excluding the Lake Chaplin area. The districts coincide with natural boundaries when reasonable to do so. It preserves communities of interest, specifically neighborhoods. It did not favor or disfavor any racial group or political party. And it minimized political subdivision splits, specifically precincts. Next is a description of each district. First District 1. District 1's core area is Delta. It is a northern-based district as shown in green. The neighborhoods include Delta, Bayside in Park, Northwest Everett, Port Gardner in Park, and Riverside in Park. The largest populated neighborhood is Delta. Two neighborhoods, Delta and Northwest Everett, are wholly contained. A small portion of Riverside is not contained within the district. And the Port Gardner section includes one precinct, Precinct 17, that splits Riverside and Port Gardner. Bayside is split without Precinct 18 contained within the district. The district includes a diverse population of Delta that has a third of the persons speaking another language and over 42% minority in the neighborhood, and that's 2020 estimates. The district is also characterized by containing the city's colleges and older housing structures and that's excluding the Delta neighborhood which has a greater percentage of rental units. District 1 has the lowest estimated population growth from 2010 to 2020 out of all of the districts and that's a 6.85%. District 1's configuration started with determining whether Delta and Northwest Everett should exist in the same district. Delta and Northwest Everett was combined after analysis showed a relatively small turnout difference between combining Delta with a Northwest Everett district configuration and a Delta district that adjoins areas to the south of Delta. The next decision was to split mostly Bayside or Riverside. Bayside was split along Precinct 18, which allowed for most of downtown to be included in District 2. Also, Precinct 18 was a good demarcation point since it appears to match socioeconomically with the Northwest precincts in Port Gardner. Precinct 17 was added to contain most of Riverside. Only a small portion of Riverside was left in District 2 with zero population. And Precinct 17 also splits Port Gardner with seven persons left contained within District 1. The area contained within the red circle includes the area Riverside that is not within District 1. It contains zero population and of course, that is using 2010 population data. The green circle includes the area in Port Gardner within Precinct 17 that contains seven persons and that does exist in District 1. District 2's core area is Lowell. The district encompasses the central eastern portion of the city to the northwestern side of the city and is shown in pink. The neighborhoods contained include Bayside in Park, Glacier View, Lowell, Pinehurst Beverly Park in Park, Port Gardner in Park, South Forest Park in Park, and Valley View. The largest populated neighborhood is Port Gardner. Three neighborhoods, Glacier View, Lowell, and Valley View are wholly contained. The district neighborhoods also include very similar median housing age that centers around the mid-1960s era. The district has the second-highest estimated population growth of the districts from 2010 to 2020 and that's a 12.74%. And has the largest amount of businesses at 1607 and that's using Esri's 2020 and Richmond data estimation system. District 2's configuration began with establishing Lowell as the core area and connecting the area to the downtown region directly below District 1. As mentioned before, Bayside was split along Precinct 18, which allowed for most of downtown to be included in District 2. And it appears that Precinct 18 matches socioeconomically with the Northwest precincts in Port Gardner. Precinct 17 was not included in District 2 in order to contain most of Riverside in District 1. Only a small portion of Riverside was left in District 2. Since Precinct 17 also splits Port Gardner, once again, seven persons in Port Gardner were left within District 1. Next, there was a determination of whether to include South Forest Park within District 2 or District 3. Reviewing socioeconomic neighborhood commonalities, South Forest Park could fit well with either District 2 or District 3. However, in order for District 3 to exist within the acceptable population deviation, Evergreen and South Forest Park could not both be wholly contained within District 3. Thus, most of South Forest Park was placed in District 2. Only a small segment of South Forest Park is excluded from the district due to Precinct 33, splitting the neighborhoods of View Ridge Madison and South Forest Park. The map shown here with the red circle includes Precinct 18 that has been split from Bayside and included in the northern neck of District 2. Next, District 3, whose core area includes Boulevard Bluffs, Harbor View Seahurst Glen Haven, and View Ridge Madison. The district encompasses a portion of the western and coastal areas of the city and is displayed in purple. The district contains the neighborhoods of Boulevard Bluffs, Evergreen, Harbor View Seahurst Glen Haven, South Forest Park in Park, and View Ridge Madison. The largest populated neighborhood is View Ridge Madison. Four of the neighborhoods, Boulevard Bluffs, Evergreen, Harbor View Seahurst Glen Haven, and View Ridge Madison are wholly contained. South Forest Park is split to include a small portion, only 341 persons, within the district and that's within Precinct 33. District 3 is characterized by its coastal western boundaries as well as moderately newer housing structures with a median year of 1978 and the highest median household income at 83,492 of all the districts. The district also has the second-lowest population growth from 2010 to 2020 at 7.34%. District 3's configuration began with wholly containing the district's core of Boulevard Bluffs, Harbor View Seahurst Glen Haven, and View Ridge Madison neighborhoods. Once it was determined that most of South Forest Park should exist inside District 2, Evergreen could remain wholly contained within District 3. A small portion of South Forest Park would exist in District 3 due to Precinct 33, splitting the neighborhoods of South Forest Park and View Ridge Madison. Also, the industrial areas around Boeing could remain mostly intact above the Boeing Freeway and included in District 3. The map displays the area within District 3 that includes South Forest Park. This is a small portion of Precinct 33 that is split by View Ridge Madison and South Forest Park and contains 341 persons. District 4's core area includes Casino Road that's within Westmont. The district encompasses the southwestern portion of the city and that's shown in blue. The district contains the neighborhoods of Cascade View in Park, Holly, Twin Creeks in Park, and Westmont in Park. The largest populated neighborhood is Westmont. One neighborhood, Holly, is wholly contained. Westmont is almost wholly contained. It does not contain one census block, which has only five persons. The entire district exists below the Boeing Freeway. The district is characterized by its diverse population with the highest percentage of the districts that speak another language in addition to English at 41.45%. The district also has newer housing structures, a median of 1988, and higher renter percentage at 69.15%. Using 2020 total population estimates, the district is the only majority-minority district in the city. District 4's configuration began with the core area of Casino Road. Since it was not conventional redistricting practice to follow only a road, the neighborhood of Westmont was a starting point for District 4. Only a single census block of Westmont remained not included in District 4 and it includes only five persons in 2010. This census block exists in Precinct 42, which splits Westmont and Cascade View. Since the neighborhood of Holly had similar socioeconomic and demographic attributes and is geographically intertwined with Westmont, it was logically added to District 4. Precinct 47 and 95 were added to wholly contain Holly within District 4. The precincts also were close to matching District 4 socioeconomic characteristics. However, the two precincts also split Cascade View and Twin Creeks. Precinct 84 finally was added to bring District 4 within acceptable population deviation and it improves the compactness of the district. The red circle on the map highlights the census block that is split by Cascade View and Westmont and thus is not included in District 4. As mentioned before, this only contained five persons in 2010. District 5's core area is Silver Lake. The district encompasses the southeastern portion of the city and that's shown in green. The neighborhoods within the district include Cascade View in Park, Pinehurst Beverly Park in Park, Silver Lake, Twin Creeks in Park, and Westmont in Park. The largest populated neighborhood is Silver Lake. One of the neighborhoods, Silver Lake, is wholly contained. The district is characterized by a mixture of diverse population. It is the second-highest of the districts. Newer housing structures, median is 1986, moderately higher median household incomes, 68,155, and relatively high percentage that speaks another language in addition to English at 31.44%. District 5's configuration began with the core area of Silver Lake. District 5 added to Silver Lake the nearby neighborhood areas of Twin Creeks and Cascade View to the district. This was compelled due to being landlocked and not encroaching into District 4. After adding areas of Twin Creeks and Cascade View, population was needed for the district to reach an acceptable deviation. It was decided to not cross over Evergreen Way to add population from Evergreen and it would also split the neighborhood. Instead, areas of Pinehurst Beverly Park were added in order to bring District 5 population deviation within the acceptable standard. Precincts 34, 37, and 39 were included into District 5. These precincts have socioeconomic attributes that are reasonably close to District 5 and thus were added to complete the district. The map depicts the northern end of District 5, which focuses on the three precincts in Pinehurst Beverly Park that were added to the district. Precinct 34, 37, and 39 were selected instead of crossing Evergreen Way and splitting the neighborhood of Evergreen. And that is a complete and concise description of the background, plan development, and the proposed final draft plan, A8. Thank you for your time.
Awesome. So that is our overview video. Next, we're going to introduce the commissioners. And so commissioners, if you can turn your videos back on. I'll go in alphabetical order like I did yesterday, so we'll start with Mary Fossey.
Hi. My name's Mary Fossey. I'm an Everett Essentials graduate and I've lived in the Delta neighborhood for over 14 years now. Chair of the Delta Neighborhood Association. I serve on the Council of Neighborhoods and the Everett Public Schools Fiscal Advisory Council. I mentioned last time that I volunteered for this commission because I wanted to be part of creating a more equitable system of voting and better representation on the City Council and do that while avoiding disenfranchising any residents. And I really love this amazing city and my neighbors and I feel lucky to raise my children here. And I'm really looking forward to our public feedback from the community.
Thank you, Mary. So next, Chris Garai. And Chris is our Vice Chair, by the way.
Thanks. Hi, Chris Garai here. I live down in the south end. I've been in Silver Lake for about five years and involved in neighborhood associations and block watch and council of neighborhoods and joined this commission to learn more about the city and the process of districting and am enjoying it so far. It's been a cool learning experience, so I look forward to hearing your feedback too. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Chris. Next, Jim Langus. And you're on mute right now.
My name is Jim Langus. I was born in Everett and resided in the city for most of my life. Like many of my peers on the committee, I also have a strong interest in the city and personally, I consider the districting work as another aspect of community service. I have a genuine interest in Everett and its future and having safe neighborhoods for residents and children has always remained a priority for me. You know, this is an important responsibility. I want to support a plan that meets the guidelines and is in the best interest of the city of Everett, all of Everett. In 2016, I served on the Charter Review Committee and since the inception, I've been involved in a youth program, summer program called Badges for Baseball. I volunteered. It's a program in conjunction with the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation and managed by the Everett Police Department and the Everett Boys and Girls Club. It's a terrific program. I attended North Junior, graduated from Everett High School. I've always been an advocate for our Everett Districts schools and continue to support Everett High School and their activities as long as I'm able to.
Thank you, Jim. Ethel McNeil?
Ethel, you're on mute. Oh, there you go. Good morning. I've been in Everett since 1969. My kids were born and raised here. I've been very active in this city. We started an NAACP many, many years ago and I was a part of the very first one that started in Bailey in the church here years ago. I have served on a lot of school commissions. I retired from the Edmund School District. I'm very interested in this city. I want to see this city move forward in a good way so everyone is included and we can say that we genuinely work together to support each other. So if one neighbor's down, all neighbors are down and we pull in together to help bring that neighbor up and we support and we stand strong. It is not, I'm not for splitting and making anybody, you know, just out there. I want all of us to work together. It's time for unity. It's time for unity in this city. It's time for us to unite and stand strong. That's what I want to see. I, like I said, I've been very active in the schools here. Jim and I are on different ends of the streets. He's got Everett High School. I've got Cascade High School. And we've been rivalries for a long time, but when it comes to all of us standing together, we stand strong to support one another. So therefore, I just want to see Everett grow and I want to see Everett be prosperous and strong and most of all, united.
Thank you, Ethel. John Monroe?
My name is John Monroe. I'm a resident of Port Gardner. I've lived in Everett probably 60, I think 63 years. Like Jim, I'm a graduate of Everett High School, part of that South Junior and Jackson Elementary. I live just a few blocks from Jackson Elementary now. I spent my entire career with the Boeing Company. I graduated or I retired from there as an executive on the 777 program. I have been very involved in the community since my retirement. I serve on several different committees, one of which I really enjoy the most is the work that I do with Everett Public Schools and their Career and Technical Education and STEM program. And I chair the General Advisory Group for that. Been very active this summer in helping internships and mentoring several of those. As a lifelong resident of Everett, one of the things that I have seen over the years that is different now than it was back in the 50s and 60s is the diversity that we have in our neighborhoods. And that's one of the things that I think we can all agree upon is the value of that diversity and wanting to keep our diversity balanced, balanced in representation so that we all have a fair voice. And that's my main objective is to making sure that we all get an equal voice. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Kari Quas?
Good morning, everybody. Kari Quas, I live in the Northwest Neighborhood. I too am an Everett man, born, ever man till I die maybe, we'll see. So my family's history goes back to my grandmother in Lowell and my dad and, you know, the downtown and my mother grew up here too. So there's, I got Everett in my blood. I'm living in the house I grew up in. I also lived in View Ridge Madison when I was in high school. Currently, I'm the Chair of Northwest Neighborhood. I really have enjoyed being on this districting commission. I wasn't a part of the organization to get us to this point, but I think that to break up the city into districts is reasonable, to bring more voices to the table. I work in conservation and I have a fun front yard and I believe in doing good things for the planet and it's really scary outside right now. So I'm glad this meeting can be virtual so people can attend from their homes. So I look forward to your comments and thanks for being here.
Thank you, Kari. Ben Young?
Good morning. I'm Ben Young. I'm a resident of the Valley View Neighborhood. I have been living in Everett for the past 18, excuse me, 12 years. I retired from Snohomish County Government. I retired from Snohomish County Government, working on computer systems. Currently, I actually, it lasted almost thirty days of retirement. And currently, I'm the Director of Marketing and Grants for the Communities Coalition. I also sit on a couple of commissions. One is Snohomish County Technical Advisory Board. Another is the Everett Housing Board. The, I'm an active member of the NAACP, and my primary goal in being a part of this commission was to make sure that there was equitable representation throughout the city. And I feel that if you go in and really look at what is being presented, that's what you will see. And I'm, again, as I've said before to all of the commissioners, and I want to be publicly known, I think that we did an outstanding job.
Thank you, Ben. Julius Wilson?
Good morning. I'm Julius Wilson. I'm from, oh, I'm Julius Wilson. I'm from Westmont, Holly. I'm from California. I'm the ninth commissioner that the other commissioners voted for. I'm, I'm usually a part of Everett District now, and I'm looking forward to hearing you guys' comments. That's all.
Thank you, Julius. And so then I'll also have Tony introduce himself, too, while he's on. So Tony Fairfax, our districting master.
Hi, I'm Tony Fairfax. I'm a demographic and mapping consultant. I have a company called Census Channel. The company works on mapping services. However, redistricting is my specialty. This will be the fourth round of redistricting that I've been through from nineteen ninety, two thousand, two thousand ten to two thousand and twenty. During that time, I probably developed maybe close to a thousand different redistricting plans. And so I'm looking forward to hearing your comments, so I can add on another one.
Awesome. Thank you, Tony. So now we're gonna open it up for community comments. I'll turn it over to Nicole to let us know who we're gonna be hearing from.
Thank you, Simone. So we're gonna flip over, like Simone said, to community comments. So thank you, everyone, for joining us. Looks like we have one, two, five people on the call to provide comment. So when you're called on, please unmute your computer. If you're calling in from a telephone line, press star six. That'll get you unmuted. Remember, you have three minutes to provide comment. Please state your name and address for the record, and we're going to start off with John Nagle. Hey, John, if you're there, you're muted. Okay. Howard Lacuna?
Hey, Nicole, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you for joining us. Please state your address for the record, and we'll get started.
Awesome. Good to meet you all. My name is Howard Lacuna. I live in Delta Neighborhood here in Everett. Address is eighteen thirty-two Belmonte Lane. I live in the new, not so new anymore, but it's a street of condos in the north side of the Delta neighborhood. I recently moved here about three months ago, and thank you for hosting this event. I love it. I love the introduction. Good to meet everybody on the commission, and I really appreciate it for your work that you guys are doing. So my question is, and question concern, as soon as I moved to the Delta neighborhood and I started walking around, I immediately loved the community. Everybody's been super nice.
Howard, it sounds like you cut off a bit. I'm gonna pause the time here for a second and see if we can reconnect. I heard you a little bit.
Am I back?
Yep, you're back. Okay. I'll restart. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. I guess Comcast. Yeah, so I was saying that my biggest concern is, while just walking around and getting to know the neighborhood, is the disparity that I'm seeing between this neighborhood, Delta, and the neighboring neighborhoods. And I'm talking about Northwest and Riverside and Bayside. It seems to me, and I'm very new, I don't understand all the details, but it seems to me that there hasn't been as much effort being put into, by effort, I mean resources, budget, or whatnot, being put into this neighborhood compared to some of the other neighborhoods. And while making my thought known to some of my neighbors, I was told about this districting effort and about the possibility of this getting even worse if Delta get looked in with Northwest Everett and Bayside and Riverside in the districting effort, because I guess the thought is that by doing it, because we have a different socioeconomic demographic that a lot of the resources will again be allocated to Northwest and not so much to Delta. I'm not sure how that would work for Riverside and Bayside. For me, maybe a little selfishly, because I live here in Delta and I have vested interest in making sure that Delta thrives as a neighborhood, I want to make sure that we are properly represented in this districting effort. Maybe that means that we have to sit down with representatives from Northwest, Riverside, and Bayside, and I agree to equally split the budget. But yeah, so my concern is just the fact I feel like Delta is not getting the attention that it requires, that it needs, and that people here at Delta care, and they're very involved. They want to be involved. They want to be part of it. And we're extremely proud of our neighborhood, and we want to make sure that our neighborhood thrives.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you, Howard. Next, we have Carol Jensen. Please state your address for the record, and the time will start as soon as you do. You're muted, Carol.
Okay, now, Carol Jensen, two-five-two-two Rucker Avenue in Bayside, a part of Bayside that would be part of District two. First of all, I am gonna say from the very beginning, I've supported the districting idea and the process. I believe that we've had just an excellent slate of metmers for the commission, and I really honor the work that you've done, and it sounds like it's also been enjoyable in relationship building, and that's exciting. However, and I am expecting that there probably are some good answers to some of the concerns I'm gonna bring up today, but I do want to bring them up. When I saw the map for the first time, the A8 map, I was quite surprised as it related to my neighborhood, to Bayside, and that, and where I am in the southern part in District two, which runs all the way from Bayside to Valley View. And I have good friends in Valley View, and I've always felt like when I go to Valley View, it's about as far as I can go in Everett. I know that wouldn't include, you know, far south Everett. But, and I feel like that the neighborhoods, the areas that have been joined together in District two do not have any sort of natural affinity with one another. When I think of Lowell as the core area, for those of us that live in Bayside and Port Gardner and in downtown Everett, which also has, you know, more and more residents in apartments, it's just, maybe I don't quite understand the concept of the district core, but that just, as much as I love Lowell, it just doesn't seem connected to where I live. And so my question is really, you know, how much this district strains that some of the hopes for the fourth criteria about that boundaries will coincide with existing recognized natural boundaries and shall, to the extent possible, preserve existing communities of related and mutual interest. I would try, I'd think about how one would represent a district with that wide a swath, and it's very hard for me to imagine that, that, you know, all the way from the edge of Northwest all the way down to Valley View. So I sympathize with, okay, I sympathize with the idea of a river district, and I would like the commission to consider if there's possibly some way of more of a north-south orientation of the districts in our part of Everett. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. So I just want to quickly say that each district has to have roughly twenty thousand people included in it. So regardless of how you split up the map with any configuration, it is going to be a stretch of a very large piece of land to get that number. And I'll let Tony touch on the rest, unless Simone, you had something to add to that.
No, not really. The only one thing I would say is, with the split of Bayside, we made that decision, and why it is how it is, is because we decided not to split precincts. And when we were thinking about how much population District one would have in this draft final A8, we needed to pick up some population, and we felt that along that line, we had more of the residential part of Bayside, which is the north side of that neighborhood, and then the more like downtown core where a lot of like, the newer multifamily and the businesses were at the bottom. So I'd have to go back and double-check what our notes were on that meeting, but that was my, that was what I remember from our discussion on when we were splitting that, is that that was why we made that decision, just for that component of it. But I'll turn it over to Tony to talk about the more general questions.
And I'm glad you brought that up about the splitting. I concur that one of the rationales was we wanted to keep that downtown area somewhat intact in that Bayside area. The second reason why we did that was that we wanted to include Riverside, or most of Riverside, in District one. And we did that with just a little sliver not included that really didn't contain any population in 2010. The third thing I would say is that it is very difficult, in many cases, to have all areas of the district common, meaning that all areas are very similar in the district. It's very different, difficult to do that. And in this particular case, this is somewhat of a central district, and it does cut through multiple neighborhoods. And because of that, it's a mixed bag. You do have some that are matching. For example, you know, the median age of the housing structures in the neighborhood are fairly similar. So you have all of them except for Valley View, which has a little higher renter percentage, and therefore, they're a little more recent. But all of those are similar. And then it's a mixed bag with income. You know, Lowell and Valley View are very similar in income where the other ones aren't. And so unfortunately, because it's that central district, it does have a variety of socioeconomic aspects, but within the range of acceptability. And so we wanted to keep it a compact, relatively compact district, and I think we did so. And so unfortunately, it is slightly a diverse district, but within the realm of acceptability.
Thanks. Next, we have Tondi Rainey. Thank you for your comments, Carol.
There we go. Sorry. Hi, I'm Tondi Rainey. I live at forty thirty-one Friday Avenue. And I'll apologize right off the bat, my kids are up here, so if you hear background noise, that's them. So first, I want to say thank you, you guys. I realize this is volunteer work for almost everybody on the commission, and watching the video and seeing all the hard work you guys have put in, I think the plan looks really, really great. A couple of questions that I had. One, I was interested to see if there was any, like, what the weight of projected future growth was with all of the transit coming up the I-5 towards us. I'm just wondering if we were able to account for, I don't know, sort of the expected population growth that comes with that. We've got more and more people moving up here because it's more affordable than Seattle. The other question I had, I read through some of the comments that have been provided already, and I was just interested, it looked like in this, I live in what will be District two or what's proposed District two, but District one looks very interesting to me. Penny, can you stop, please? I saw some concern that campaigns would be harder for people in the Delta neighborhood to run against people in the Northwest neighborhood based on the difference in their socioeconomic statuses. And so I was just wondering if there's any information you guys could provide on how you might try to be counteracting any of those sort of negative effects of grouping those two neighborhoods together.
So for your first question about projected growth, we, I can kind of turn it over to Tony. We did talk a little bit about growth, but since we really were really relying on our 2010 census data, we were really, we really tried to stick with that. We did consider some of the, I think it was like ESRI data that was more recent. But I'll turn it over to Tony for that one. And then the question about campaigning, it probably wouldn't really be a question we discuss in this format. We really want to focus on just discussing A8, but it is a valid question. But I just, I don't think this is really the space to discuss that. So I'll turn it over to Tony to talk about that data.
Yes, we use the 2010 date, of course, and a couple of things. One, we have to stay within a certain tolerance or what they call a deviation of population. So it's only so much we can actually do and prepare for that, because we have to stay within that. It's called ten percent, or plus or minus five is really what we use for each district. That being said, giving you some idea, it looks like District three and five may be out of bounds, if you will, when the data comes out. And so you'll probably have to adjust those two districts the next time, probably next year. But we're somewhat constrained, that we only have that plus or minus five percent to really allocate for that. Now, I probably have something to do, and some to say, rather, but I probably don't have enough time on the Delta-Northwest situation. How much time do I have?
About two, less than two minutes.
Okay. I think it's important to realize that there is a new paradigm out there now. You had an at-large system, and you're moving away from that at-large system. And the at-large system, one of the problems is, it allows for an individual, let's say, running for office or a councilperson, if you will, to not go to an area that may be right next door to them. Why? Because they don't need the votes of that particular area. They can go somewhere else in the city and get those votes. So they don't need those votes in that particular area. And I'm not saying this is done by intention, but they just don't need it. The benefit of a districting system is now you have, and I'm gonna speak hypothetically, a person who lives, or maybe a councilperson on the west side, will quickly realize that they do not have enough votes on the west side to get elected. They have to go to the east side to garner votes. Again, I'm speaking generically. And the normal process is that if they don't do what the east side would like, meaning that they'd sit at the table and say, we want this community center, I want some more business development in there, then what happens is that people on the east side will probably elect somebody on the east side because they have more votes in place. And so there's a new paradigm. Before, the people on the west side, if you will, didn't have to go to the east side. They could go anywhere in the city to garner votes. There's a new paradigm now, and that's the benefit of a districting system. You now have to think more locally, and you now have to reach out to more individuals. That's all.
And just real quickly, Simone, if I may, in 2021, the districting, the new data will be in 2021, the districting, the new data will will be collected. And they're a little bit behind because of COVID. So in 2022, we actually have a deadline to redistrict. And that will look like picking up a couple precincts or dropping them off into different areas of the city to make sure that we have equal population across our city and districts. And so you'll see a different version of what we're doing now in about, you know, year and a half to make sure that the population is equally distributed. So next up, we have Linda Warbonnet.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. So my name is Linda Warbonnet and I live on 16th Place West in the Holly Neighborhood. I wanted to start with a little history that I think will speak to why some of the passion is behind this Delta issue. I was initially supportive of the Everett Districts Now initiative. But then I was told by that campaign that legally there was no way to split Delta from Northwest. So I pulled my support from the initiative for that reason, among others. I know many people who also did not support the initiative because of the Delta Northwest grouping. And perhaps that's why that initiative did not even get enough votes to make the ballot. The city council instead put the measure on the ballot with what I felt was a deceptive implication that the commission could do the map differently. So I was very surprised and pleased to hear that the district master said splitting Delta and Northwest was an option. For over a month now, I've been listening to concerns that the commission is no longer considering splits, other than compactness. I've also heard that it's because the voter turnout numbers are similar. That may be true, but I think it's important to analyze further and understand what percentage of the population from each of those neighborhoods is actually participating in voting. If you factor in all the reasons people may be ineligible to vote, such as age or immigration status, or why they don't vote, such as language barrier, I'm not certain, but I expect that you will see that the Delta voice would indeed be diluted by the Northwest vote. I encourage you to do some further analysis on that or at the very least provide a more thorough explanation to the people that you're representing. And I just kind of feel like the concerns are being blown off and not really explained. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Would you like her, me to add something?
Sure. Go ahead, Tony.
Yeah. The only thing I would I would say to the caller is that in the original analysis that that I looked at, we looked at turnout. So this was basically the what was turning out, the voters that were turning out in the 2018, 2019 election. So if we had looked at registered voters, it would have been even a closer call for what I'm about to say. So it ended up being about 300 different votes difference between a sort of a northern Delta Northwest, Bayside, Riverside District versus a Delta Southern District that goes down to Lowell. So 300 and some different votes out of both the 2018 and the 2019 election. And that's out of, let's say, 4,000 in the 2019 and an off-year election and then 7,000, I believe, something in that on-year, at least a congressional election in 2018. And so that's just turnout. If we included registration or included those that actually could be registered, that would be even closer because of the population of that east side. It's just that people are under-registered rather under-turning out in those particular Delta precincts. And so it's not, I mean, any vote, you can turn a election with one vote, granted. But it wasn't significant enough to make that sort of impact, if you will. Now, the last thing I will say is I don't know exactly about the efforts. But maybe they were speaking of being compelled to draw a district and they're speaking of diluting minority voting strength. And so maybe what they were talking about is in a court case, you may not be able to be compelled to draw that district. And that's just the rationale is what rationalized what someone else may have been saying before and not being able to draw the district.
Man.
Can I, can I comment, Nicole?
Yes. You stop. Yeah, you stop.
I understand you've probably done, you know, you've looked at this, you've done all the work. But I would encourage you to provide the information so people can see the data themselves. You know, like I said, I've only heard the two talking points about the compactness and the voter turnout, but I haven't seen any data. And that will give people something to focus on and kind of be proof to support the decision. So.
Thank you. I'll look through the document library and find those documents. And if they're not there, I will make sure that they they get in there. And I just wanted to add, Simone, if it's okay, that Tony's job is to analyze data, as Simone pointed out in the last meeting. And so he's really at the 100-foot level and our commission is more on the ground. And so I just wanted to point that out before we go to our next caller. John, if you're able to get off mute, we'd love to hear from you. Did he hang up? I don't see. I don't even see our guest on here anymore. So we'll reach out to John via email and see if we can get him connected on the next call. And Simone, I, that's that's everyone we have RSVP'd and everyone I have on the call. If there's anyone listening that didn't get to speak, please send an email. If you weren't able to connect this morning, please send me an email. I did have some people with some technical difficulties and I was able to help them out and they'll be joining us on Monday. So anyone who needs support, N Weber, W E B B E R at everettwa.gov.
Awesome. Well, thank you, everyone, for all your great comments. If we have no one else on here to comment, I think we can adjourn this meeting.